All right.
I still have a screen saver that I use when I was thinking about retiring. It was like a, a neverless.
I just retired this past year.
You did.
I'm staying with mom now.
All right. Congratulations.
Had a little space.
John.
It's floating around. And then it's so.
How you doing? Good. Trying not to. You can get kind of pinched in that.
I don't know many of your backstories.
How about you?
Yours?
Good? My favorite. It is my favorite. About return.
Think about it.
We had the 401k meetings work.
Not me.
I've got at least another fifteen years.
Starting in Athens.
Okay.
Athens.
Got to go to sixty seven.
I have more but like three bucks, you have three dollars. That gets a little high. And then the kids are playing and like. It was the funniest thing where they went back and forth like four times.
Barcelona.
Oh, okay. A little kid versus like an adult. And I know the adult was like, I want to lose. He's like, I don't want to be that guy. And he did, he did. Stop. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Let's do that. It was funny. It was good. It was really fun. How about you guys?
It was good. Yeah, yeah, we didn't play many games, but we watched a lot of football.
Yeah, that's true. Do you guys stay here?
Well, I, my parents hosted in.
That's not.
Couple people come from.
I still got.
And I'm telling you, I.
So we ended up going to Crete twice.
Yeah, we're going to Crete. We're going to Crete.
Going down to Jerusalem or I mean, Israel at all or Egypt?
No, it's more. It's called antiquities.
Going to Malta? You're not tired of Malta?
No.
Don't?
What I do with all the islands and Greece.
Hundred and sixty hours worth of work. I mean, come on, like that just doesn't.
And just.
Doesn't equate to something. Doing the.
No, peace.
Virtual classes, you know, three, four hours an hour.
And Pete, Pete was.
In two or three hours and they do the entire month. Like, it's just crazy. Puts it in perspective.
What are you taking to the base?
Anything new coming up? I like the idea with what they were doing with the Centerville Road. Like, I thought that was pretty good.
Asian. Has to be the US.
Are the old friendlies.
But all that is gone from the base.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Is there any more? And then. Or go. That's great.
November twenty. Next year.
Oh, okay.
But it's all booked up.
Is that where it is? So like.
Go through the modifications and waivers.
Cruises he wants to take.
Okay.
Okay, Cindy, we're ready to go.
I'll say.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December eighth meeting of the East Hemphill Township Planning Commission. Please join me in starting the meeting with a pledge to the flag.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
As far as the, the commission members this evening, we have one regular who is absent. That's Dan Callis. So I would ask that Joshua, Mr. Better, sir, no, I'm sorry, not Mr. Better. Sorry. Mr. Boltby served as a, as a voting member this evening. And of course, Mr. Spangler, you're welcome to participate in questions or anything. Okay, the first order of business is the approval or taking up the approval of the November eighth meeting. I've reviewed them and found no discrepancies with my notes. Does anybody else have anything to offer? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November.
I'll second that. Okay, with motion, excuse me, by Mr. Boltby, seconded by Mr. Deiter, that we approve the minutes of the November tenth meeting as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? One extension, two extensions. So the one, two, three, four, five, and two extensions. All right, the action items to review this evening begin with Mavis Tire at sixteen fifty-five Columbia Avenue. We have waivers, modifications, and a final plan to review. Great, is it Cindy, I don't know if you're in, if you're controlling the screen, can you zoom out just one or two clicks? I think a little bit might be off if we could.
Zoom out.
Zoom, yeah, the minus sign right next to it. Oh, other way. There we go. Yeah.
Play to react.
One more. There we go. Perfect. Great. Well, good evening, members of the commission. My name is Luke Morrow. I am a project manager with solely engineering with offices in Monroe, Connecticut. We're here tonight to present to you our, our final plan along with our request for waivers and modifications on deferrals for the final land development plan for the proposed Mavis Discount Tire at sixteen fifty-five Columbia Avenue in East Hemphill. And the owner and applicant is Lancaster AMA Realty Ventures LLC. With that, I will kick it off to Chris Palowski for my team. He's going to kind of go over the site plan and some of the engineering with you, and then I'll take over from there. Go ahead, Chris. Chris, I think you're on mute, buddy. Here we go.
Good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome, perfect. So as Luke alluded to, my name is Chris Palowski. I'm a civil engineer with solely engineering office located in Monroe, Connecticut. Just quickly, for the record, I do want to say that we have been approved by the Lancaster County Conservation District. Our plans have been reviewed by the Lancaster County Planning Commission. And also, we have worked through a number of responses with David Miller Associates, who's the reviewing engineer. And we have received and submitted to the Pennsylvania DOT for an HOP. And with that, I will get into the presentation. The site is located at one six five five Columbia Avenue. It is situated in between an existing Valvoline oil change to the west and commercial development to the east. It is also bordered to the north by some existing residential development. And Princeton Avenue runs north south to its east. Cindy, if you wouldn't mind changing the next to the next slide. So the site is currently an existing Friendly's restaurant, which is now closed. It features some associated parking, some concrete sidewalks, and two access points off Columbia Avenue. Again, as I mentioned before, there also is a residential development to the north. And there is a final, third and final access point off of Princeton Avenue to the east.
Have a slide.
If you wouldn't mind changing to, sorry about that.
Yeah, we have a slight delay in the slides.
It's got to go to the moon and back.
No worries. All right, so as Luke alluded to, we are proposing a Mavis Discount Tire. It is approximately six thousand one hundred and sixty-eight square feet. It features seven service bays. There's also eighteen parking spaces on site. Now, we are originally proposing to site accessways off of Columbia. But Pennsylvania DOT has, moving forward, is trying to limit the accessways to a state highway. So we are forced to use the proposed one accessway off Princeton Avenue, which is a two-way access that you will see off the northeast corner of the site. Out of those eighteen parking spaces that are proposed, one of them is ADA accessible with the associated striping and ramp. In front of the building, there is also an enclosed dumpster pad in accordance with the East Hemphill Town regulations. To the, in the southeast corner of the site, there is a pylon sign, which is included, details of which are included in the plans that you have before you. And then to the north of the building, there's also a six-foot-high privacy fence, which I'll get into a little bit when we talk about the landscaping plan in the next couple of slides. But as a part of our plan here, because we were limited with the one connection off of Princeton Avenue, we will be widening Princeton Avenue four feet to further improve the traffic flow in and out of the site. With that, Cindy, you can transfer to the next page here.
I thought you said there only have one access.
Thank you. So before you is the grading drainage and utility plan. In front of the service bays, in front of the building, the site is a little more flat. That's so that the cars can get in and out of the service bay easily. And then the grade kind of chases down to the northeast to meet, meet the grade on Princeton Avenue. The stormwater for the site flows to the south and to the east. They enter the series of catch basins and pipes before eventually connecting into the existing system within Princeton Avenue. All the runoff from the roof will enter the roof leaders, be routed underground, and then flow to the east where there is a series of underground stormwater chambers, which will then connect into the other pipe that you see, which routes the water from the parking lot before eventually ending up in the storm system again within Princeton Avenue. The site is, like I said, mostly flat in front of the service bays and then grades down to the northeast. Sorry, Cindy, if you scroll back up for a second, I did just want to mention the utilities that we have. So we are proposing tie into an existing gas tub that's in front of the building. We are also proposing a new sanitary manhole, so the site will continue to be served by sanitary sewer. There is also two new water lines that are proposed. One is domestic that kind of runs east-west off of Princeton Avenue before tying into the existing water meter there. And there also is a brand-new sprinkler line, which will come off of Columbia Avenue and kind of make a diagonal before tying into the back of the building. And then lastly, there is a new fire hydrant proposed off the southeast corner of the site. And electric telephone and cable service will be connected overhead to an existing telephone pole that currently lies off of the edge of Princeton Avenue. Thank you, Cindy, you can now scroll down. Perfect. So as I mentioned before, our plans were reviewed and approved by the Lancaster County Conservation District. The existing Friendly's Restaurant, associated parking, and concrete sidewalks that are being demolished and removed. We are featuring a construction entrance as well as silt fence surrounding the property. There will also be inlet protection on all of the proposed stormwater basins as they are installed. And the site has been designed in accordance with the Pennsylvania Slow Erosion and Sediment Control Regulations. Cindy, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down. So this is our landscaping plan. We are using native species and all the plants and trees will be drought tolerant. Now, there is a provision, the regs, where a screening buffer is required from residential zone to a commercial property, which Luke will get into a little bit at the end here. But we went before the zoning hearing board. And in lieu of tearing to the north of the property, there's currently existing trees. And in lieu of tearing those down and planting new ones, we're proposing a six-foot-high privacy screen fence and proposing to maintain those existing trees as they currently act as a buffer to the residential zone property to the north. Our lighting plan isn't shown here, but all the lighting is dark sky compliant and is all LED features. You can scroll to the next side, Cindy. So wait for a delay. This is the floor layout plan. So you'll notice the seven service bays to the south side here, that's going to be in front of your building. That's where they'll work on the tires and do the other maintenance. It's off to the top left, that's where the tire storage is. In the front right of the site is where the main entrance is and kind of the waiting room. And then there is another like play area or open area off the top right where guests can wait while they're getting maintenance done on their vehicles. Cindy, if you wouldn't mind scrolling to the next slide. Thank you. So the building is supposed to be a gray concrete masonry unit block along three or four sides. And then in the front, you can see the various blue and teal shades with the Mavis Discount Tire elevations. And then obviously, the glass and the seven, the seven service bays from left to right, as you see those there. And the main entranceway again will be located off the southeast corner of the building, which will be served by the sidewalk with connectivity to the parking lot throughout the site. And I think Cindy, you can go to the next slide and then see if there's anything else. Luke, if you want to take it from here, kind of discuss the waivers and modifications that we currently have for the project.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. For the record again, Luke Morrow with solely engineering. Bear with me as we go through, there's eight waivers and modifications, and then we have a request for some deferrals. And we'll just quickly go over some of the zoning relief, the variances that were granted by the zoning hearing board. Luke, so two, two of.
Luke.
Two, yes.
Excuse me, one second. As we're going to be, going to be reviewing these modifications and you can walk us through them. I just want to ask the planning commission that if they have any questions as we go through each one to raise them at that time, so we don't have to come back.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, makes sense.
Hey, go ahead.
We'll go through the first two are easy. We were before you in March, on March tenth, where we presented our sketch plan for the project and you had granted us an approval from sec, our waiver from section two sixty-five dash four point three D one A, which is a waiver of the preliminary plan. And that was subsequently approved by the Board of Supervisors at their hearing the following week on March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. So as a placeholder at tonight's meeting, we're presenting before you and then again next week and for the supervisors the following modifications and waivers for this project. First is a modification from section two twenty-two dash five point one one point A, which is to, we're asking to allow a maximum driveway slope of eight percent, where your figure one of the East Hemphill technical specs and standard details requires a maximum slope of six percent. And section, the same section, two, two twenty-five dash five dash eleven A states that all driveways shall be designed and constructed in accordance with figures F one through F seven and East Hemphill Township Technical Specs and Standard Details. The reasoning that we're asking for this waiver is because Chris may have alluded to it, but there is actually twelve feet of grade change if you go from the southwest corner of the property along Columbia Ave to the northeast corner of the property where our driveway is located. So in order to, you know, flatten out the site where we need to for, you know, our building, which takes up a good chunk of the site and then keep it also flat along the front where the main drive aisle will be to get in and out of those service doors, we were, we were required to, to, you know, to design for a slope of eight percent from that site driveway off of Princeton Avenue. And hence, that was the reasoning we, we asked for that. I'm going back and forth with Scott Hane from David Miller. They thought that that was a reasonable request and they recommended that approval of this waiver be granted by the commission. Is there any questions on that one?
Luke, eight percent's not to the point where somebody will bottom out.
Correct.
You're still going to be safe that way.
Correct, safe that way. And I believe, I believe for residential or limited or minimal use driveways, I believe the regs may allow for up to ten or twelve percent. I don't know the exact number, but I believe there is some provisions for, you know, for lower volume driveways to, to go in excess of that six percent. But we do not anticipate, and there should not be any concern of any cars bottoming out at the top or bottom of that driveway.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Don't think so. Go ahead.
Okay. Next, we are requesting a modification from, or a waiver, I guess, to the section two twenty-two dash five dash eleven dash C four, which is to allow for a centerline separation of a hundred and six feet from the site driveway on Princeton Avenue to Columbia Avenue, where the driveway is not classified as minimum use, shall have a minimum of a hundred and fifty-foot centerline separation from all the other streets and driveways. Now, if you were, take a closer look at our site plan, you'll realize that the width of our, of our property from Columbia Avenue to the stream behind us is only a hundred and fifteen feet. So that in itself prohibits us from providing that a hundred and fifty-foot centerline separation between the middle of our driveway to the middle of Columbia Avenue. So in order to account for, to provide a maximum separation, but also allow for, for vehicle turning movements and, and a box truck turns in and out of the site, we were able to provide a hundred and six feet separation centerline from our driveway to the centerline of Columbia Avenue. And in our opinion, there should be limited traffic coming into and out of the site. This is not a large traffic generator. If you're familiar with Princeton Avenue, there's not a significant amount of traffic on Princeton Avenue. Therefore, we don't see any significant issues with this request for the waiver to a hundred and six feet where a hundred and fifty is required. And again, David Miller in their review agreed with our assessment and recommended that the commission and Board of Supervisors grant relief to this requirement. Are there any issues on this waiver or mod?
Hopefully so.
Okay. Next.
Can I ask?
Sorry, one, one late question.
Sorry.
Yes, yep.
You're requesting a waiver for your access on to Princeton Avenue in relation to Columbia Avenue and, and the intersection of Princeton and Columbia Avenue. What about your other access? Does that not need a waiver also?
There's no other, this is the only access point.
Okay, so the, the one that's in the package we got is gone. Now, there's no access on to Columbia Avenue?
No, there should not be. That was removed, I believe, back in October.
Okay.
And revised, revised plans showing all these were, were submitted back on, I believe it was the twenty-ninth. But that is correct. There's no, there's only a single access now, which is located on Princeton Avenue. There's no longer any access on Columbia. Based on the Penn Hop review, they required us to remove all access on Columbia.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. So moving on, next, we're requesting a waiver from section two sixty dash fourteen dot C dot one of the East Hemphill Stormwater Management Ordinance, which states we're asking a waiver of the stormwater volume control requirements that are outlined in section two sixty dash fourteen. Section two sixty dash fourteen dot C dot one states, if a developer can prove through analysis that the development site is in an area underlaid by carbonate geology and such geological conditions may result in sinkhole formations, then the development site is exempt from volume control requirements as described in this chapter. However, the development site shall still be subject to NIPD's and ENS requirements. So I, I believe it's made its way to the commission members, but we submitted a a geo-technical engineering report and then a follow-up letter from Hills Karn's Engineering. And basically, we consulted with them to get their opinion on whether or not they thought it was, it was appropriate or to, to provide underground detention and infiltration. As you know, this is a pretty tight site, so any above-ground detention really isn't feasible here. And in talking with Hills Karn's, they thought that it, it was not a wise idea based on the karst geology in the area and the potential for sinkhole formation, you know, below any kind of underground detention system that we avoid any, any kind of infiltration and then therefore ask for the waiver of the volume control requirements. That said, and going back and forth with Scott Hane from David Miller, he was in agreement with that request. And therefore, you know, respectfully request a waiver for the volume control requirements in the stormwater ordinance. Are there any questions in regard to that one?
Look, is there any way you can reference the DMA letter as you're moving through this? Which is what has before them? I think what you just described was item ten in DMA.
Yes, yep, bear with me. I will go through. I do not have the David Miller letter in front of me. Shame on me. I'm sorry. Thank you, Cindy. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Find it.
Can you, can you scroll down here to three point? Here we go. All right, next, waiver mod is from section two sixty dash twenty-one dot F dot three of the Stormwater Management Ordinance, which states that a maximum flow depth within the intersection of streets shall be one and a half inches based on the twenty-five-year storm. Because the site is pretty tight and because we do have somewhat of a slope on that exit driveway down to Princeton Avenue, we were able to reduce the depth of flow to one point eight inches, which is slightly higher than one point five. However, in, in trying to, you know, work with Scott Miller, I'm sorry, Scott Hane on his comments, we were able to reduce from, we had a little, slightly over two inches of flow depth in the driveway there, we were to reduce it down to one point eight, which we thought was, it was adequate based on, you know, some of the conditions that we're forced to work with on site. So we respectfully request a waiver from the one point five inches to provide one point eight instead. Are there any questions on, and I apologize again, but I do not have what item number specifically that was. Any questions?
It's eleven.
It's number eleven from David Miller.
Yeah, just so you're aware, Luke, when, when the board takes action, they're going to take action based on DMA's letter and their system.
All right, let me bear with me for once. Is, would it be better if I, if I tried to locate it for everyone and go through it or are we gonna?
How about, how about if we do it the other way?
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine, you guys, we don't want to go through, yeah, we can go through that way. That's fine.
Yeah, you've already talked about numbers one and two from David Miller. Number three has to do with the planning islands. It's two sixty-five dash eight point seven point one.
Yep, so there's three. And if I, if my memory is certainly right, I believe it's, it would probably be the next three comments, three, four, and five. So we're asking for three waivers, one from section two sixty-five dash eight point seven dot I dot two A and then two B and two C. Those state that a minimum of eight and a half foot wide perpendicular planting island shall be located at each end of each parking space row and at intervals of no greater than a hundred and thirty feet apart in single or double bays. And then two B states perpendicular islands should be placed opposite each other in adjacent rows of parking. And two C states that the last parking stall in a row shall be separated from drive aisles by a planting island a minimum of eight and a half feet in width. So we're asking for a waiver from these three requirements as, as we had stated, the site is, is relatively tight. We are providing eighteen parking spaces, which is, you know, it's one or two spaces lower than our original site plan that was approved by Mavis. They were agreeable to go down to the eighteen spaces, however, that was their limit. So in trying, if we were to put in one additional parking space, I'm sorry, if we were to put in this landscape island, we would have to lose an additional parking space. Additionally, because there is no access off of Columbia Avenue, you know, the ability for trucks to traverse through the site with some landscape islands in the way would be somewhat prohibitive for the flow of, of, you know, more so of truck movements than car movements on the site. So therefore, we request a waiver for these planting islands. on the site, so therefore, uh, we request a waiver for these, uh, planting islands, one at the, at the end of the parking spine adjacent to the building, uh, and then subsequently, um, to, uh, waive the requirement for an island opposite that, on the opposite parking spine, that's adjacent to Princeton Avenue, um, and then, um, I believe that would, those would be the one or two additional islands that would be required if we were to follow, um, the regs as they are stated. Is there any, and I apologize if, um, you know, if that was a little, little much to, to, uh, to digest there, but are there any questions on any three of those waiver or modifications or requesting to kind of all kind of go in concert with each other?
Uh, a, a question here, uh, you're saying that they did not wanna go from nineteen parking spots and lose one to add in this?
So, we, we started with twenty, I believe, um, and then we went down to nineteen and now we're down to eighteen because the way the access, uh, had to shift to account for the removal of the access on Columbia Avenue, so, um, one, to have to, to comply with these regulations, uh, we would likely need to re, re, lose two additional parking spaces, one at the southeast corner of the building, um, where the parking spine kind of comes to an end, and then, uh, by the, the, the letter of the regs, there would, there would also be required a planting island on the opposite side, where it says perpendicular islands should be placed opposite each other in adjacent rows of parking. So that would require a, a further reduction to sixteen parking spaces, which, um, you know, Mavis was, was, was already kind of, you know, um, you know, standoffish about going down to the eighteen, but we did get them to agree to that, um, which they said was their bare minimum, uh, most of their sites, they, they plant, you know, they, they, they park for twenty-five, thirty vehicles or more. Um, so, that, that being said, that was one item, and secondly, um, adding some additional landscaped islands would, would, um, you know, we're trying to avoid, uh, in order to accommodate greater flow of, of truck traffic, you know, mostly, mostly box trucks for tire deliveries and whatnot, um, on the site, but trying to, um, prevent any kind of circulation issues with that because those access points on Columbia Avenue, we were forced to remove them based on the Penn dot comments.
So, my question then is, how many do they expect in terms of vehicles at any one point during the day being parked at that particular location, you know?
At that issue, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I don't, I don't know what that answer is, um.
I'm just, um. Is that, I mean, if they're, they're having an issue going, and if they normally have twenty-five parking spots and they're pushing down to get to eighteen, and then we're going to sixty, and I'm just curious, how many vehicles do they think that might be in and out on a daily basis, how many do they think might be parked there? You know?
But I, I think.
It's a low, low volume going in through the one corridor, but, uh, Princeton, I think you said, it's very minimal traffic going in and going out. So I'm just curious why they would potentially have an issue with that.
Well, I, you know, I think with, with any, you know, kind of tenant, they wanna be able to, you know, provide some buffer if required in their parking there, and, you know, and granted, every, every, you know, customer that comes in, maybe have, you know, not just getting tires done, but they do, you know, other brakes and, and whatever, whatever, you know, what else? Other kind of things that they do, um, you know, for services for customers that come in and, you know, depending upon the volume that may come in a day, they may need some, some overflow to accommodate, um, you know, number of patrons, I didn't, I don't, I don't know, honestly, um, I can't answer your question quantitatively of how many parking spaces they typically see, but we were in discussions with Mavis. Um, they were really shooting for that twenty, that was what was originally approved. Um, you know, when, when, um, you know, when Lancaster AMA Realty Ventures got this preliminary plan approved, and then subsequently had to go back, um, the, the, the chain of command actually went through the development manager and all the way up to the vice president of the company to get the sign off to reduce it down to this eighteen parking spaces, so.
With you, I, I know, I know Columbia Avenue really well, and empty parking spots don't look as attractive as landscaping. So that's the only reason I'm asking, because if you have a bunch of empty parking spots and we're asking for a waiver, but they're not being used, and you're taking away landscaping that looks attractive, because I know, I mean, Columbia Avenue, we're trying to revive it and make it look really nice, and there's a lot of empty parking spots as it is along that corridor, so why would we wanna be able to lose a landscaping unit that we have in, inside here if we're going to have empty parking spaces, if they're going to be used and they have some, some bandwidth that they can show that they have that many that they need? Well, then that's something else, but I mean, you're asking for a modification, so that's why I'm asking that.
John, you're, you're also getting into a zoning issue with that, at that point, um, a, and I'm, I'm looking at the older plan here that has your ITE parking calculations on here that indicate that it, based on the square footage, you need nineteen spaces and you're providing eighteen, and I know the zoning ordinance has some flexibility in that, um, I, I.
That's cool.
I, I just don't want them to get into a spot where they have to go to the zoning hearing board because they have less spaces than what the ITE manual would recommend also.
In, in, in regards to, I know, um, you had mentioned the landscaping there, we are, you know, showing perimeter landscaping, some decorative, uh, you have two trees and some decorative shrubs, uh, along what we'll call the, the entrance way uh, to the property at the corner of Columbia and Princeton, we, we, you know, we pretty much, uh, there's a strip of, of plantings that wrap around, um, those five parking spaces from the south all the way to the north, and then, you know, low-line plantings in front of where the pylon sign is. Uh, and then we do have, you know, some, um, some plantings around to screen the dumpster enclosure, and we also have another where we can fit, uh, a decorative, um, you know, a, another, um, uh, deciduous tree in the southwest corner, so where there was some ability to try to spruce up and provide as much landscaping as we could, uh, we did, we, you know, we tried to, tried to do that to, you know, to, in like you say, try to, you know, screen that, that, you know, the, the asphalt paving area as best as we could, um. So, um, you know, that, that in mind, I guess that would be, you know, some of my, uh, my response to some of the, you know, landscaping concerns there. Are there any, any other, uh, questions or comments on the, the planting island waivers?
Okay, Luke.
I'd also like to chime in, if you have a second, I'm sorry, um, those are comments three, four, and seven on David Miller's list. And, uh, also, just another couple of quick points, we are reducing the impervious coverage on the site. And, uh, also, the, the Friendly's hasn't been in business for a number of years now, and it has a lot more spaces than we're currently proposing. Um, at our Mavis, uh, Discount Tire, so I'd just like to make those points, uh, to you guys as well.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, Luke, you can go ahead now.
So, uh, Luke, the next one, which is our number five, has to do with sidewalks, it's, uh, section two sixty-five dash eight point four A.
So these are the, um, deferral requests, um, for sidewalk, and we did submit a formal, I believe everyone has received it, um, we submitted a formal, well, I, I should say formal, a draft, um, because it needs to be executed, but a draft curb and sidewalk installation, uh, deferment agreement, so, um, the deferral is sought for a section two sixty-five dash A point four point A point one B, um, which covers, so we're requesting a deferral of just the sidewalk, uh, installations along the property frontage on Columbia and Princeton Avenue along the, uh, um, until such time that the Board of Supervisors determines that these improvements are required. Um, so more specifically, section two, two twenty-two dash six dash point six point B, um, states that where a proposed subdivision or land development fronts on a township street, the applicant shall install curbing, sidewalk, and pavement widening along the entire length of the proposed subdivision or land development. In accordance with this chapter, the Township Subdivision, Land Development Ordinance, and East Hemphill Township Technical Specifications and Standard Details kept on file at the Township Office. So, uh, and in concert with that, section two twenty-two dash six point six dot C states that, um, where a proposed subdivision or land development fronts on an existing Penn dot street, the applicant shall install curbing, sidewalk, and pavement widening along the entire length of the proposed subdivision or land development in accordance with design standards and specs set forth in the East Hemphill Township Technical Specifications and Standard Details. So, um, at first, we were requesting a deferral of widening, uh, and sidewalk installations uh, along both frontages, however, um, based on conversations with Scott Hane from David Miller, um, we came to an agreement and we are, as Chris had stated earlier, we are now providing painting, pavement widening to provide the twenty-six, uh, full, the full cartway width of twenty-six feet, um, along Princeton Avenue from the curb radius at, um, the intersection with Columbia all the way to our site driveway, and then north of our site driveway, um, when you go back to Wilson Avenue with the sub, the residential subdivision is, there is a culvert crossing, um, which is only, I think about twenty feet wide of, of pavement width over there. Um, and is, and then, uh, once you get to that point, it's kind of off of our property, so we're showing a taper from the twenty-six feet down to the existing cross section, which I believe is about twenty feet, um, over that, um, that culvert crossing, uh, to the subdivision located behind the site, so, so we're providing a pavement widening on Princeton Avenue, um, we're also providing, uh, new, new sidewalks, um, as required, uh, per the regulations, however, we're requesting a deferral of the sidewalk, um, for two reason, um, two reasons along both frontages, one, um, there is no, there's no sidewalk connection to the residential subdivision, um, be, behind us along Princeton Avenue. And if we were to install the sidewalk, um, the connection to the back could not be made for the same reason I said, we couldn't do the full width, uh, of pavement back there because there's that culvert crossing, so in order for a sidewalk to be constructed on the road, it would have to be widened, uh, to account for all that, uh, and there is no, there's no sidewalk connection, um, to the subdivision in the rear. Um, we're requesting a deferral for the sidewalk installation and for any widening along Columbia Avenue, uh, because one, um, you know, there's no off-site improvements required on Columbia Avenue, um, because there's minimal traffic, so, you know, for that reason, we don't think that any widening is required, Penn dot has not asked for any widening um, of Columbia Avenue, and in terms of sidewalks, um, because of the grading of the site, as I had mentioned, there's a twelve-foot grade change from the southwest corner to the northeast corner, um, to provide a sidewalk within the Penn dot right-of-way, um, would require retaining wall, uh, within the right-of-way, which, you know, for safety reasons, um, you know, what, you know, you don't want cars traveling, um, you know, along Columbia Avenue, if they were to lose control, you know, they'd be, they'd be, you know, kind of, kind of falling off, uh, you know, a three to four foot retaining wall, uh, over there, so in order to make the grading work, um, at this point, a sidewalk would not be feasible, and there's no connection point, um, going to the west along Valvoline. Um, so for those, those are the reasons why we're, uh, requesting to defer all of the sidewalk installation along Columbia, along Princeton, and any kind of widening, um, along Columbia Avenue at this time. In lieu, uh, so a, a deferral agreement, like I said, a draft was submitted, um, and in lieu of the, um, sidewalk installation along, um, Princeton Avenue, um, the applicant has agreed to provide a fee in lieu of a one and a half inch milling overlay, um, from the new curb line to the center line of Princeton Avenue, um, you know, as, as a fee in lieu of, uh, the sidewalk installations as part of the deferral agreement. Um, and I believe, I believe the, let me get the fee here, I believe the fee was around four, was around four thousand dollars, it might have been, Chris, do you have that number, I'm sorry, everyone? Do you have the number of what was, uh, oh, I'm looking at the wrong response to comments, that's why. Um, the fee in lieu of was thirty-nine, three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay, Luke, that's not something we discuss here that supervisor decide whether that's the right number or not.
Okay.
So let me, I'm still a little confused about that. Um. Fee in lieu of the milling and overlay to the center line, because I thought you said you're widening that route, aren't you going to have to mill and overlay your side of the road anyways?
We're doing, we're doing, so we'd have to do a full depth, um, you know, full-depth widening for, it, it's about four feet or so to widen from twenty-two to twenty-six. Um, was the agreement or, 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 or what was, um, you know, kind of what was in the back and forth between, uh, you know, David Miller's review comments uh, and our responses and what we've agreed to.
But the traffic lane would not be build and overlay to match your extension?
Um, typically, you know, typically when we do widening, we would only be doing widening, you know, where the, you know, fold-up pavement section, you know, from the edge of existing pavement to where the new proposed curb line would be. Um, you know, that's, you know, something that would be, what we would typically see, I don't know if the township has, um, you know, separate requirements, but those were not, uh, brought up, and I believe, uh, various other departments have reviewed as well, and it was not requested.
Okay.
I'm not sure which version of the plan that you guys have referred to, there is a, uh, November twenty-ninth revision. Um, and I don't know if, it didn't come up here, but it may look on the plans as if there's no curbing on Columbia Avenue at one point, I think that was in discussion, so there's no deferral of curbing or waiver. If your plans don't show the curb, the current plans show to close those two existing points of access with a curb, so it'll be curbed the whole way through.
Correct.
Along the corner and up to the access on Princeton will all be curbed. But I know from at least some of the questions, it appears like maybe you have an older version of the plans, and at one time, those were not shown to be closed, and that could be confusing for some of these.
We have April fifteenth plans.
Okay, yeah, the.
Oh, my, revision date.
Yeah, the.
The one that was in the link was April fifteenth.
Yeah, there's a.
That's right.
November twenty-ninth, I think is what Luke's referred to multiple times, um, and that helps, there may be, that's, that may answer a few questions as well, but, um, yeah, we, it's, there's been a handful of eyes on that part too, just to make that area as best as, as to be.
Thanks, Nick.
I do have a question, um, regarding the sidewalk, you know, and it's kind of a question for us as a group. Um, we have some other properties that were recently developed on the same side of Columbia Avenue that put sidewalk. Uh, Lidl project, uh, has sidewalk along there, there's bus routes along Columbia Avenue, there's people standing on places where there isn't sidewalk. Is that a concern that we're deferring sidewalk and also deferring it in a manner where the grading would never let it be? Wouldn't, we'd never be able to do it. The grading is like three to one there as the plan designs, so if we defer it, if we wanted to do it, it'd be far more expensive to do it when you don't have a two percent cross slope for the sidewalk.
Although if we did decide to require it, it would not be our expense.
Yes.
Yeah, in.
In the future.
You know, like you mentioned, Joshua, uh, Lidl's quite distance away.
Mm-hmm.
But if you look at the properties right adjacent, that, I think that's what the Board of Supervisors would say, okay, for, maybe for this block, which might include, I don't know, four or five properties, we'd wanna put sidewalks, and at that point, they can get, come back and say, okay, those people that have deferrals, those four or five need to do it.
What I'm, what I'm afraid is, when you defer and the grading doesn't work for it, it's far more expensive than than what you're gonna get to be able to do it, it's difficult to make it happen.
You, you're talking about the grade from, um, Columbia Avenue down into the site.
I'm kind of looking at this plan, and maybe the plan's different now, but that.
No, it's, it's, it's correct, that's, it's about three to one, it's the same slope, similar slope, it drops in grade by about three to four feet from Columbia Avenue to our, and remember, that's holding the eight percent grade, um, up from, um, Princeton Avenue into the site. So that's already, you know, you know, it's already at an eight percent grade to get that, to, to reduce that slope even further would require an even steeper grade to be able to, you know, flatten that out. Um, if you were to look at the, um, existing survey, I think that's in your packet, but you can see, um, the contour lines for the existing friendlies, um, the minute you get onto the site, those, um, the grade drops from front to back by, you know, nine or ten feet, goes from three eighteen down to, um, three ten. Um, you know, as you go from Columbia Avenue to the existing edge of pavement, um, so I don't think we have the, uh, the site plan may, may be the best to show, we don't have the actual survey in here, but, um, you know, there's already some significant grade change on the site, so we're kind of, you know, kind of mimicking it instead of front to back, um, from, from the eastern wall of the building down to, um, Princeton Avenue. From, from the eastern wall of the building down to Princeton Avenue. So we can flatten out where those service bays are.
Yeah, I mean, I think you have good questions. I think historically, this planning commission has been very proactive in. Requiring sidewalks, certainly when there's any connectivity to other sidewalks. And if we're not requiring them, we have a deferral in there so that in the future, if we need. You know, if, if things develop and that becomes more walkable in that side of the route in that section, then we're gonna make them have to put a sidewalk in and.
And to your point, it will be expensive. I mean, retaining wall will be required, but.
Yeah, that's how they'll have to do it. They'll put a retaining wall and then.
But that, that would include part of their deferral. That'll be their expense at that point.
May not ever.
And that would, and that would require, you know, I would assume require review and approval by PennDOT because it is in their, their right of way.
Just for keeping track purposes, I think that's numbers five, eight and nine.
Correct, five, eight, nine, yeah.
Anything else on the deferral?
I don't think so, Luke. I'm just making notes here as to which ones. There's a couple of them that have conditions attached to them. I want to make note that we catch those.
Sure.
So, let's see. I believe that's.
Six is the.
Six is the.
Which is another landscape.
Another box, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I believe that's the waiver of section. From section two sixty five dash eight point seven point eight point two C. Which is to allow for a waiver of a type C buffer planting requirement. Where type C buffer planting is required between the proposed use in the existing RL zone to the north of the property. The language in section two sixty five. Point. Bear with me one second, two sixty five. Dash eight point seven H two. A, B and C states. Alternatives to the, I'm sorry, section two sixty five dash eight point seven H two E. States alternatives to the buffer planning requirements and two sixty five dash eight point seven H two A, B and C. May be approved by the Board of Supervisors. However, alternate design shall be equal to or more appropriate for the proposed development than the above requirements. I know Chris touched upon this. When he was going through the landscaping design. And I know Scott wanted us to make sure that we brought this up during our presentation. So. Rather than remove a healthy, mature. Tree buffer which sits between the north side of our property. And the south side of the residential subdivision properties to the north of us, in which there is a drainage. A tributary, a little kind of Stoga Creek. Rather than cut down an existing buffer of healthy trees. To, to provide this type C buffer. We thought it was more appropriate to leave and you could stay, thank you Cindy, you can see it's a pretty. You know, wooded, mature, mature tree growth area. Rather than to cut that down to provide a type C buffer. We're requesting to provide instead a six foot high, a solid white vinyl screen fence. So in addition to. That those existing trees that serve as a kind of a natural buffer between our property and the residential uses to the north will also have a six foot high. White vinyl scre fence that may, you know, fill in some of the gap space if, if the canopy of the trees is, you know, slightly raised up above the ground. So. With the fence and the, the naturally occurring, you know, wooded buffer that's already there. We believe that meets the intent of the regs. So we're requesting a waiver specifically to provide that type C buffer. On the north side of our property.
Is there a reason it's white and instead of brown or green?
Um, you know, we just, you know, white is typical. If, if I think. If the board, you know, and, and Justin, if you want to weigh in, I don't think we would have any concern with providing a different color. If, if that was the, the board's request.
I mean, to me, white just sticks out. It doesn't camouflage with trees and the natural area behind it. It just. Draws your eye right to the fence. I, I don't know how the other members feel. White would be the last color I would use.
Sorry, Mr. Deter.
I, I was just gonna say, I don't think we want to get into reading the color of the fence that they put in.
What, maybe we could make a suggestion?
The color isn't mentioned in.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if I've ever seen a green vinyl fence for sale. Quite honest.
Yeah, that's, I was, I know, white, white is.
White or beige.
Yeah.
Most part or. Yeah. Yeah. My, my question is the, the graphic that we're looking at now, the yellow line, that is not the property line, correct?
Yes, correct. I, I apologize.
Property line goes farther north and those trees are definitely on.
About another, about another ten feet or so, yes.
I was just, I just want to make sure that the trees that you're using are actually included on your. Property and not controlled by the people to the north.
Uh, so there's actually a twenty foot wide alleyway, believe it or not.
Okay.
Between, it's a public alleyway, so we don't have the ability to touch. It might be best, Cindy, if you go down to the, the site plan slide, which is the next one. Yeah, you can, I guess you can kind of see it there as well, but. There's a twenty foot wide alley, which is, which is where the. You know, the creek or the drainage swale, whatever you want to call it, is located between our site. And, and, and the majority of those plantings are located within the twenty foot alley, which we don't have the ability to touch because it's not on our property. But they do, they do somewhat go onto our, our property as well. And we'll, we're going to maintain as best as, as best as we can. We're not proposing to tear down any, any existing trees.
If we're using them, I think you're asking for the screen in place of having to provide them up on the property because they can't fit it.
But that alley is township property?
No, it's not.
The alley is noted as, on the survey, it's noted as a existing twenty foot wide unopened alley. It doesn't, it doesn't specifically say the owner, but I, I would believe that it's, it's, it's owned by the township.
Ownership is a difference. If it's owned by the township. But it does run the length of Columbia, pretty much.
It does?
Uh, yes, it does. Yep. There's, I think that's where the, most of the drainage from the subdivision. Goes, you know, south into that. And then a lot of the drainage from the properties on Columbia drain back towards. The existing drainage from the friendlies, there's not even any structures on site. Everything just kind of flows through some curb cuts. There's no treatment or anything at all. It just runs down the bank and into the. You know, into that, that drainage ditch in the back there. So, you know, significant upgrades and in the drainage there as well, but. Yeah, it, it, it's a, it's essentially. That, that alleyway is essentially, you know, the stormwater. Management ditch, I guess, if you will, for the Columbia Avenue. And I think the Wilson Ave residential corridor.
You said it's a stream.
So if I'm, if I may chime in, for everyone who's tracking December sixth, for David Miller. Comments there. And also for the record, I'd like to state that the, in the back there, there is a stormwater. Collection system for the roof layer runoff. And there is a series of easements that we have provided on the proposed plan. Cindy, if you scroll down to the next. Slide, they're shown on the grading, drainage and utility plan there. And for the record, I do have to state that the proposed fence will not adversely affect the function or purpose. Of the stormwater management easement or conflict with any easement agreement controlling the easement. And if the. You have to access, have to access in the future that our applicant will, will have to make adjustments to the fence or. Allow any such modifications to occur. So I did have to state that for the record. I apologize. Thank you.
Okay, I, if there's no further questions, I believe that's. All eleven of the modifications we need to act upon this evening.
Correct. And, and did you need me to go through the, the variances that were granted by zoning hearing or? Okay, all right. Sick and tired of hearing me speak.
I have one question generally on the plan. Did you do vehicular turning templates for your box truck and. Can it do a three point turn or does it have to back out into Princeton?
No, it can do a three point turn, which is why we providing, we're providing actually a. A thirty two foot wide drive aisle for it to be able to make that. And we're also. You can see there's kind of a little bump out where the drive aisle is on Princeton. There's eight feet of pavement. When you come into the site, there's additional eight feet of pavement for maneuvering area between the drive aisle and the parking. That's located along the building specifically so it can make a three point turn on the property and not have to do the maneuver within Princeton Avenue. That's specifically why the site was, was designed that way for that reason.
These plans were also reviewed by Diane Garber. She's the Emergency Services Coordinator and we did provide truck turning templates to her. That show the fire trucks can easily access the site in the manner that Luke just described as well, similar to the box truck.
Thank you. And does anybody on Zoom have any input, questions? Okay. All right, then, if, if I've got the tally correct here. We have two modifications, number six and number eight, which would have conditions.
Five also.
Five also.
Five, six, eight, nine are condition.
Okay.
It's nine condition?
It's conditioned for the deferral agreement. To provide in the deferral agreement.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Might just ask then, in the future, if. If Scott could mention those, he bolds condition sometimes.
Right.
But he doesn't on all of them. So if we could get into some sort of a uniform. Recommendation there to be easier for us to catch. So we're talking about conditions for what was it again? Five. Six, eight. Okay, if somebody would like to try, we could take one motion for all of them. Or we can take them individually.
Go for all.
Go for all.
I'll make a, well, I, I think this is, you know, not uncommon for redevelopment of a small site like this to have this many. Requests of waivers. So I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval of modifications. As listed on our document, modifications one, two, three, four, seven, ten and eleven. And also conditional approval of modifications five, six, eight and nine for the Mavis. Discount tire land development plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion. By Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Deter, that we recommend approval of modifications one, two, three, four, seven, ten and eleven. And conditional approval of modifications five, six, eight and nine as per the engineers. Recommendations. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? So it would be unanimous, seven to zero. Now, is there a.
Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
We still have the plan.
About the plan.
Don't leave yet.
Don't leave yet.
Oh, oh, okay.
Don't want to come back in January.
Okay, no, agreed.
Now, the review letter, do you have anything? That would be. That you would object to or have any issues complying with the David Miller review?
No, we're, we're, we're in agreement with, you know, with the bonds that were outlined and. The fee in lieu of that was recommended and all the other, you know, recommendations in his, in his review letter.
Okay.
Concerns.
Are there any other questions from the commission? If not, we're ready for a motion on the plan itself, final plan.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the final land development plan. Condition on the applicant addressing all staff and engineering review comments. I'll second that motion.
Matt Scott. Right, I have a motion by Mr. Deter, seconded by Mr. Palakowski, that we recommend approval of the final plan. For Mavis Tire at sixteen fifty five Columbia Avenue, subject to the engineers' comments. Engineers and staff comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? So that would be unanimous. Okay, Luke and Chris, thank you for your time and explanation.
Great, thank you guys very much. Look forward to bringing the, the development to the, to the township. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, now, the next little topic is some modifications to the zoning ordinance, which have been. Balling around for a number of months. Cindy, would, would you like to walk us through it? How would you like to handle this?
That's why Nick's here.
That's why Nick's here.
He basically wrote it. So he knows the ins and outs. He's been part of the meetings. You're right, it's been reviewed by the planning commission group.
Got a hundred comments here to go over.
Twenty pages or something?
So yeah, the, this amendment has been through multiple drafts. Took comments from various staff and the planning group and basically the intent of the ordinance. In the beginning, the, the intent was to. Kind of make it more clear as to how some of these uses can be incorporated and also trying to make some of the uses that the board felt that were. Coming to the zoning hearing board maybe too often. And if that's the case, usually a review is done to see perhaps this step isn't needed. And perhaps it could become a use that would be permitted with some extra criteria on top of it. To check off any boxes that may have been imposed by the zoning hearing board as a condition of approval in the end. So basically. A review was done of about ten years of zoning hearing board cases. And we kind of tallied. What are these things that keep coming up over and over again? One of which in here is the accessory dwelling unit use. That was one of the most common. And I think staff and, and the board had received. Feedback from the applicants kind of asking why. Whether going through the process, all these kind of things. So all that was evaluated. And then there were uses that were. Identified as a, an ongoing list, we'll call it, from staff where they just kind of track things like, you know. These questions would come up during a permit review. Or a lot of these uses were already happening and maybe weren't permitted because the, the people just didn't know that perhaps it needed to come through some type of approval process. So all those things were looked at. And then what you have here was the results. Of that kind of analysis and review. And then that was vetted through the planning group and multiple. Staff and other individuals reviewed that as well and kind of refined and made some changes. And then it was also reviewed by. The township's solicitor as well prior to coming to this point. So. I, I don't know if it is helpful to actually go through line by line. So if there's anything in here that is of concern, we can address. Or if you want anything to be pointed out, we can do that as well. I don't think anything in here is, is too drastic of a change. A lot of the uses were changed from perhaps a special exception to a permitted use. Or from a conditional use down to a special exception, if you will, which is kind of the same process, of course, but just a different body is reviewing it. And, and ultimately it would be granting approval if the applicant can meet the criteria that was outlined in the ordinance. So it's, it's, it's almost the same idea, just a different body. The applicant has to meet the criteria and is granted approval and that's the standard. The uses that were changed to being permitted by right. There were conditions imposed upon that that would then become a review during the permit process rather than having an applicant pay a. You know, large amount of money, maybe have to, to hire an attorney to come before the zoning hearing. the zoning hearing board. Like I said, all those reviews were done and all, all of the pieces that were being put on each case were just pulled out and put into the ordinance as, okay, here's a checklist on all the stuff, things to review when, when the permit comes in. So the zoning officer would in essence be putting them through the same process, but it's a much quicker and less painful process, I think, was the intent. And again, these, these were uses that were identified over a period of time as kind of repeat requests. And then there's a, there's a few pieces in here that may not be directly related to the use. You'll see cluster development lot size was changed. That was a result of just some other kind of analysis of properties that are left over in, in East Templefield. And perhaps maybe that number was, was too low. And we did receive review from the County Planning Commission. There were two comments. One was the density number and the other one was about a use in some of the residential zones. And I think the, it was a community rehabilitation use. It was looked at and in discussions throughout the process that that use perhaps did not correlate well with the other uses in the zone. And we did make sure that use is still allowed in the township, and that is allowed in the enterprise zone. So it's not as if something was removed completely. It was just limited to an area perhaps where everybody in that group thought it was best allowed, rather than perhaps in an area where there's a lot of residential use. The enterprise allows it for more of a commercial institutional type use for that, rather than being perhaps in a neighborhood, something along those lines. So again, I don't, I don't want to go through each one of these unless that benefits anybody here. But any questions or any comments, be happy to try to answer those.
Brett's going to pick on.
I, I had just one question, and I think I understand why it's written this way. It's on page eight, section two seventy five, two triple A regarding the schools. I'm assuming that's for an Amish school because it limits the size to two acres.
Correct. And is that the one you're referring to, this within the ag and the rural business? Yeah, I think there might be an existing, if I remember back to one of our meetings.
Two acres is not big enough for any sort of school unless it's a one room Amish schoolhouse.
And I think you're correct. And obviously, from that, I think the areas that are zoned that way, but don't have public utility access. So yeah, I think that's, and again, I believe the idea there was there is one. And I think the original thought was that use was not going to be permitted. And then it was reviewed, like, hey, there is an existing use, let's not cause them trouble.
Because there's no way Pennsylvania Department of Education ever.
Yeah, exactly. So yeah, I think the intent there was to allow that, that type of a use without removing the whole thing.
Okay. That was my only, that does, that was the only thing that I saw.
Question, I had Nick. The accessory dwelling units in the ag zone, we have a couple farms that actually have two dwellings on the properties. If they were sold, would they have to come before the zoning hearing board to have non-related people live in those homes based on this?
Are you saying that it's, it's one property with two dwelling units on the property?
Correct, yeah, like one might be partway in the lane and then further in the lane is another.
And then whoever would, would purchase that, you're saying?
Currently, they're like, they have a tenant in the one. And so would this mean they would have to get zoning hearing board approval to?
This actually is the opposite, like right now, they would have to get zoning hearing board approval. This now allows it to be a permit, basically. You, you would come in to Nate, apply for a permit, and he would run through the additional criteria that the zoning hearing board would have looked at. So it's kind of going the, it's kind of going the other way.
But even if they're not, like if they rent it out to somebody not related to them.
Does that person work on the farm by any chance?
Probably not.
There, there are provisions that would allow that type of a use for the ordinance.
Would that be considered a prior existing non-conformity?
I mean, if it's.
But would that change when it gets sold? Like, I think, I think Toby Rohrs, T. Hershey Rohrs property, there's two.
A continuing, non-conformity can continue as long as there's no alteration.
Okay. So if they wouldn't alter that, like Jim, Jim Kettering's farm.
Or if it like wasn't vacant for half a year. I think there's criteria like that. It may be looked at differently by, by a staff as well, just because of being ag. There may be other provisions in there to make that work because it's more of an ag friendly type use. But I think these, these are the, typically it is, they're trying to put a unit on the property for someone who's in the family.
It's if you're going to try to build something, but I was trying to think of would that impact?
That's a good question. I'm not sure if the township would, would require that currently or not.
One of my hesitations was similar to Dwight about the whole wording of that accessory dwelling, that when you would go to sell that property, it early, I think, would be a detriment to the current property owners when they go to resell it. Because any person coming in, they may not have a multi-generational type of household. They may not have family who wants to live with them. And I certainly, I don't know, a large percentage of the population does rent. I don't personally see any stigma against rentals and properties that allow a rental unit on site. So I would prefer that this not be in the ordinance, personally.
Strictly accessory dwelling units, correct? Like, but then again, it shouldn't have been grandfathered in that use?
Well, I also think of it.
We're getting at is, if you're saying there's like these, this is a, you would come in to construct something new or put a unit on the property.
Like if you wanted to build something new and turn it over for an Airbnb, this would be restricted.
Here's, here's a scenario that I contemplated more recently is I had a sick mother-in-law. And I contemplated putting an accessory detached structure back there as an in-law quarters to give her some life and privacy. But obviously, when she passes away, which she did, now I have a structure that I can't really do much with. Right. So how do we accommodate people that want to bring their in-laws in and do something like that?
This is for our in-laws, though. This, this is only for.
But you lose all of that, what do you do with the structure then? So you just throw it away because you can't rent it to anybody else. Yeah, I mean, it's happened fairly frequently and currently, you know, you can't.
Change from existing.
Right.
Criteria. So I see what you're saying is you're, you're, you're saying, yeah, like right now.
Afterwards, you're stuck with a kitchen and a structure that is a waste. That's right. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Can we have something?
Because you have, if, if you move in, somebody that's not related, they have parking issues. They would have a vehicle potentially.
Yeah, in, in my particular city, I have a ten car parking lot because we have an at-home business. So we had some flexibility there, and I seriously contemplated doing it. I look at this and I say, that would have shot that down for me big time. So, and there may be some scenarios where we want to give somebody the option to bring in-laws in, build something like that and have some flexibility. Does it have to be across the board that this is not allowed?
But then again, you go back to what Dwight was saying, that where you have a tenant farmer that's been in there for twenty years farming the land while the owner lived in the big house. And now you're going to kick him out if, if the big house is sold.
I don't, nothing's changing as far as that goes. This is going from being something that you, like if you wanted to do that, you, currently, you would have to come in before the zoning hearing board get approval. And they're going to condition that approval upon you either signing an agreement or recording something that's saying that once this family member no longer uses this, you're not allowed to rent this. So I mean, that's what you're saying. What this is doing is taking what you, that there was a process in front of the the zoning hearing board and not making you go there. It's not changing anything you're allowed to do, it's just making it smoother. So I think your, your issue is with the, is with the text of the ordinance stating that it can only be used by someone in your family, which is trying to help people in your case. Whereas if there was no provision, what you would be saying is having two principal dwellings on a property, which you wouldn't be able to do on any smaller sized lot, period, unless you were in certain areas that allowed for some type of like multi-use or apartment type or a duplex type use.
So this is making it less burdensome on the person that wants to do what Josh is talking about.
And they would still have to give up that.
They still have to give up that right that once that person moves out or passes, that nobody else can move in there that's not a family member, and that currently exists.
Yeah, yeah, I think the.
Agree with that, but through the zoning hearing board, this just takes it to the staff level, basically.
So we, we don't have a two-family conversion in our municipality?
I think you do, yeah.
And two-family conversions, not in all municipalities, all have to be family members. So I'm asking, we have an option where an accessory structure can be other than a family member? You can rent out an accessory structure.
Like a rental unit, like it doesn't matter what.
Other than a family member.
Yeah, you'd have to go.
This is not prohibiting that. If that was the case, it would be a separate process that you would have to go through.
But our current zoning ordinance does prohibit that. So it's not changing that.
I think it's allowed by.
Like my neighbors, they built in-law quarters above their garage. Their parents were in bad health. Yep. So when they're, when they passed away, they could not use that anymore. So. Which kind of doesn't feel right. Maybe when their kids come home from college or maybe, I don't know. Yeah. That's. It becomes a waste, your pipes. They're not allowed to have a two unit there. So otherwise, it's a backdoor way to get a two unit. Maybe there should be an option, so. Yeah, and subdivision plans where two family conversions happen all the time, and they don't have to be family. So I guess my, I guess when I read that, I'm like, why?
I, I guess to Nick's point, though, this ordinance isn't creating that, and it's not eliminating that. It's currently there, it's just making the process.
Understand what you're saying. I'm just bringing, yeah, I'm just bringing it up, like, why don't we have an?
But I think maybe the confusion or just maybe the miscommunication here is like the, if you look at the definition for what we're talking about, it's, it is a, it is geared towards like trying to help out a family who's describing what you described, rather than somebody trying to rent out something. So I think if, I think what you're proposing or what you're stating is a different use, period. And I think the issue maybe of what's coming up is that you don't maybe agree with the condition that you would have to say that when that use of the family member expires, that then you can't rent it to somebody who's not a family member as described by the definition. I think, I think that's.
Yeah, for end of life scenarios, that's, nobody's going to do it.
And people do it all the time. I mean, there was, there was, that was the highest use that came before the zoning hearing board.
And very tedious process.
Yeah, and it was every year, I bet there was at least five.
That's what I'm saying is, you know, my situation was a hospice situation. You know, I strongly contemplated building a detached two-guard garage where I would turn it into a living scenario for however long she lived. But I'm not going to put eighty thousand dollars into something that just goes to waste after six months to a year. And, you know, it's like.
Your option at that point would be to go to the zoning hearing board and ask for relief.
Right.
Tell that the second use.
But just a quick question about what the ordinance currently allows. So are there currently accessory like units that would be permitted as accessory uses that once you change this ordinance, they're no longer allowed to rent that out to somebody?
If they're currently renting that out to somebody who's not a family member and the zoning hearing board attached the condition, which at one point in time was a notarized letter by the applicant stating they won't rent it to anybody, or they had to sign an agreement and that went to the county and was recorded. So if anybody's renting to somebody that wasn't approved in that decision, then they're already in. Yeah, they're already violating their ordinance. So like they, 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 I mean, they, if you don't know it, they will continue it. But it's not as if changing this changes anything. This just makes the process when like new ones come in, you would be before Nate rather than the zoning hearing board. And the conditions that were commonly imposed on all those applicants are now just piece of paper that you would sign state or have a sketch that you would give to Nate for him to review. So I think, I think the issues you bring up are valid, but what we're, what we're doing here isn't changing it. What you're proposing is, is an amendment to the ordinance as it exists, perhaps, or adding a use that says you can, you know, convert or, but I think the idea that you would, the fact that it's not a principal dwelling, if you will, I think that's the red flag with a lot of people is they're trying to avoid the rental of the, what was a unit is now a barn, is now a unit again. I, I, I think, I think that's perhaps why this use exists. And typically, and historically, this type of use is always tied to a family. Like it's always what you described. And I think people's issue was, why do we have to come here to get the approval when it's my mom or my, my grandfather, they just want to live with us? And I think that was the stepping stone that was trying to be avoided. If, if that makes sense, I think your points are valid, but what this is doing is.
I understand that we're trying to streamline it, but I think maybe it might be short sighted because then you have these properties that are kind of like funky. I don't know, just for resale, which I mean, ultimately is, you know, that's the fault of whoever decided to do it. But I just.
Plus that they now have in-law quarters.
And it could be for some people, for some people. I.
It's, it's a tough one. It's somewhat a separate issue in that, yeah, what they're working on here is to try to streamline this. But we have an existing situation. When you talk to housing people, they say you should encourage studio houses or studio apartments or cottage apartments in these dwellings in Solunga and some of these larger maybe houses. But when we bring that up to the public, the public reacts the other way. They don't want their neighbor to have an apartment beyond their house because they got some perception of that's going to be bad. So I'm, I'm on board with you. I think we actually, with the shortage of housing, we should encourage that.
I think I agree.
But that's another subject, and that's something I'm not sure the supervisors can stomach.
I mean, it's, obviously, it's, that, that's what we're here to talk about is, is things like that. Just to go back to the two-unit conversion, I, I know we saw that when we were doing this. It, that is a use permitted in the RM zone, but you would be going to the zoning hearing board to, to do that. But again, that, that's typically a principal building, not something in your backyard. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. If you're.
That's, I don't know, I think.
So Julie, I think your question was, nothing in this ordinance is creating a burden on somebody by making what they're currently doing
non-conforming.
Yeah, I just think that just the, I just don't, I just don't think I support it. I just, I think, I think a more variety of different types of housing is a positive thing for our community. And I think, you know, I, I guess that we want to streamline the process, and I love efficiency. I try to streamline everything I can, but I think it just seems a little short sighted, not just being so rigidly, this is just for one intended use. That's just my perspective on it.
And I think the, just to be clear, the, it's a page number seven, I think at the top there, seventy-five to a ten and eleven, I think, are the two that are, that I think are causing those comments, correct? It was those two, and, and those are additions to the ordinance, allowing it to be a permit rather than a hearing board, because every other, like every case that came through had those conditions as, in order to be approved, these are the conditions that you're going to acknowledge. So I, I see, it can be read that this is being added to it, but this is a, this, this is a result of reviewing all those prior cases. So you are correct, I guess, it, it does read almost like this is imposing something on them. But currently, you would be getting it anyway, and you would be paying a fee to get that imposed on you.
So the language there and in two seventy-five point two point eight point one two was a condition of all of those other cases, basically, as well.
Correct, eleven and twelve, if that's what we just read there, yeah. So they, like I said, at one time, there was just the requirement of an notarized letter from the owner stating they won't rent it out to anybody that's not a family member. And if that use, user no longer uses it, they had to give it up or replace it with someone else in your family, basically. And then twelve, it, it was that, and then it became a document that was being recorded at the county. So someone could track it when a property sold. It was, hey, I bought this, there's a unit in the back, it's not a rental unit because this document outlines that it can't be. Which again, I, your point's valid, I'm just saying the, what was here, it, it, it wasn't meant to restrict somebody. But I think the zoning hearing board's intentions, that's, that's what they were doing, was trying to, to keep it to that this is only here to benefit your family, it's not an income creator.
Well, and I think it's different too. So I understand that that is what they could typically attach to something. But then when it's ordinance, it's ordinance, you know, then it's, it's kind of just putting it that much further in stone. And I think, I don't know.
I think, I think you're, I think it's, yeah, definitely a valid point and a different perspective than, than what the zoning hearing board would have intended, which isn't bad. It's just, that's, it's, it's input, yeah.
But I do think at some point a conversation. But I do think at some point a conversation should continue on. I, I, I know from talking to some of the supervisors, they got a lot of heat for people buying houses in some of our, our small towns and boroughs. And then making them two units when they're single family houses and or four units or yeah, some even more. So they wrote the ordinances to make sure the single family houses stay single family.
Gotcha. So I, I guess.
But I think it's a fine line. I think, you know, it, we, we talk about our kids can't afford to move back into this community with some of it's because we don't have enough apartments, you know.
You know, carriage house things. The tiny house movement, I mean, creates a whole nother dynamic where people wanna put tiny houses back for, you know.
Right. And some of those homes are really big, but I don't know. I, I think at some point it merits some conversation that the supervisors.
I'm all for streamlining this for people that are just trying to get an in-law quarters in, and they're they would have this imposed on them anyway by the zoning hearing board.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And I, I think I get that point and I'm, I, I support the thought of it, but I think, I don't know, I just don't, I just don't support this language being in the ordinance. You know, maybe there was, there'd be a better way to go about it. Just my thoughts of, you know, maybe not.
Sure, like it's in the zoning hearing process, you're relying on somebody imposing it upon you. I think is what you're saying here. It's you're allowed to get the permit, but those conditions are now law, if you will, like it's there. Yeah. Rather than it, there's a chance maybe there's a uniqueness or you asked to not do that in the hearing. Here you would go back to the board and you would still ask for a waiver of that, but it probably would be tough to, to be granted or a.
But somebody would always have the option of going back to the zoning hearing board and asking for a variance of this section.
Yeah, like I mean, you could go and.
If, if I wanted to build something standalone on my property, my parents move in, they both die. Five years later, I wanna rent it out. I have the option of going to the zoning hearing board and presenting my case to get that variance.
Problem is you want, you wanna know your answer before you build.
Right.
You know, you don't wanna have to hope after your parents die.
It's all hypothetical because I don't want my parents living on my property.
And the zoning hearing board has, they're gonna look for, you show me the hard shit.
Sure, absolutely.
That's gonna be a tough, tough one to get that approval.
Especially when you have a
But it does.
Form saying that you're not going to do that.
But so it doesn't preclude them from asking that.
Sure, you can always ask.
Yeah.
And again, that would be the same thing as now. Like if you were previously approved, but approved, it would just be going back to the board that you went to before.
Right. I think one further point Julie to explain why it's in here as a condition is because Nate doesn't have the power to adhere conditions. We're saying, oh Julie, you wanna do this? This is what I want you to do. But, but for Brett, Brett, it's, it's okay. You know, you don't need all those conditions. So he Mr. Dan, Mr. Dan. Somebody else.
It sounds like it's, it's getting easier for the person that has in-law quarters. I, I get that, but I also wonder why there shouldn't be a place for the other scenario in our ordinance somewhere. That's just my.
And like I think a number of you've said, that may be a discussion at some point where we, you know, we, for the new people, we try to get together with the supervisors all in one room just to shoot the, you know what? And that would, that would be a topic to bring up and say, hey, how are we going to address that type of thing? Or how are we going to address tiny homes or things? It's currently an allowed use. So in the RM district, if you wanted to build a second, an accessory structure on your property, you met all the zoning setbacks and you met the parking requirements and you met all the stormwater requirements, you could do it.
In the RM zone. He said in a single unit.
That's a two-unit conversion.
Yeah, it's two-unit conversion. That's not a detached structure.
You would have to probably submit the development plan and get it approved as two principal uses on a property. You would probably struggle to do it on lot size if there's a lot that allows.
Depends on the lot size. So I mean.
It's actually a product that we've used in a couple, I'll say TND's Village Overlay zones that I've done. Where detached garages, apartments above.
And, and in those sections, I think in like a PRD or a TND, the ordinance allows for that type of thing.
That would be like an overlay or something that would say like here, this project, you could do that. It's all new construction. It's from the beginning.
Right.
And it's, yeah, like it, it's, like you were saying, it's not, it would be, you have to meet X criteria to be allowed to do that there. And then once you fit that mold, then you get, I mean, you've been there, all that stuff, it goes in. Okay. This whole community, everybody's got this above the garage or, you know, twenty percent has it above the garage, not one neighbor here and then ten down the road has one. It's, it's by design, if you will. Here it's a, like, case by case. Next, I have to do this for, for my mom and dad, but two doors down, as you said, they maybe don't want to see that back there and zoning, you know, is what it is. That's half the battle, I guess, is trying to find that happy middle. But I think they're all valid points. I think what the intent of this was not to restrict uses, it was to make it smoother for the use as defined, if that is a better way to say it. Like, your points are all valid. It's just how this use as defined is, is always been limited to families.
No, good discussions.
Not a perfect system.
I'm glad we talked about it for half an hour or whatever it was. That's, that's good. I'm glad everybody took time to read it and came with their thoughts because it's been, it's been bouncing around. How long? A year?
I, I think with, with last year being what it was, yeah, it's, it's probably been over a year, but I mean, it's
So.
There was a little bit of downtime there.
It's unfortunate in that even within any of the zones you wanna particularly look at, not every house or every property is suitable to do that. So how do you write something that's for a whole zone that might not be appropriate for your neighbor's house or, you know, so it's, it's kinda tough.
And I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, it's tough to have something that fits everything or applies appropriate to everything because there, I'm sure there are certain places in certain zones or certain properties that are big enough. They've got enough parking, like, like you said over there, you've got ten spaces or whatever, you know, that would probably have no impact. But you take some of these other ones, especially in the villages, I think is probably where you'll see it. You're getting close to the village, right?
Oh, yeah.
You know, some of those properties down there are odd shapes, maybe narrow and long and.
Well, and a lot of it is because I can think of, there's several, you know, homes with like, not home, but like multi, like there's a property on Marietta Ave that was just up for sale that was like four businesses on one lot, but it was a house, but it was converted. And I think the villages just, they are a little different because people have, you know, they used homes one time for, for one generation and then a different generation thought a business was more appropriate in there. So it got converted and different generation thought it was more appropriate to have a multi-unit. And I personally don't mind that flexibility.
And I think too, at that point, the.
You know, there are different opinions. So.
Well, and the, the village, the VR and the VC, two years ago, maybe those were amended, I think, to account for some of what we've been discussing. And there are certain criteria in there that, that do allow for business on the bottom, units on the top, but, but it is limited to those zones which, which land is filling, borders down in essence. So I mean, I think those areas, these uses are probably less common for this one that we're specifically talking about because lot sizes aren't so much narrower or smaller. They wouldn't even permit that size of the living, you know, quarters in the back. Rather than it being like in a typical residential neighborhood, you put up a building in the back that, those are the things this is trying to help. Does the, uh, the villages have their own specifications that try to allow for that, but also try to restrict the one house that now has eight units in that maybe should have four. You know what I mean? I think in here too, just real quick, there are, this use we're, we're speaking about is listed now in zones where perhaps a single-family dwelling is not a permitted use. There was discussion with staff on that, that I think they are aware of some uses that would be existing, non-conforming uses and I think perhaps in the past, some of those individuals came in and wanted to, to do something like this to benefit a family member and they just weren't allowed at all. So this again allows those maybe a handful that are out there that exist, whereas before it would have been a variance request and almost impossible probably to get. Now they could do it, but you couldn't establish a home with the intent of building this off the back.
If we're finished with the accessory, are you done with that discussion? Cause I had some concerns about the junkyard.
Yeah, this whole thing, we've discussed anything in here you want.
Okay, I didn't wanna.
Nope, absolutely.
Cutting off, um, the definition of junkyard, I was looking through some other definitions are in there and I don't know. Just my thought was it's a pretty narrow definition of junkyard. Like the key thing being the deposit or storage on a lot of one or more unlicensed wrecked or disabled vehicle. I don't know, that seemed like a reasonable thing. There's a lot of car enthusiasts that might have a vehicle on their lot that they're in the process of fixing up. So if you buy this definite, I'm reading this, that by this definition, if you have someone working on one car on their property.
Is it outside of a building or inside the building? If it's outside.
Well, it could outside of the building, you know, in the garage, in the backyard, you know, there's.
I don't even know if the property maintenance, the property maintenance code may say you can't already do that.
I think it'd be a zoning issue.
Yeah, I think you'd already be breaking the law. Yeah.
That's if it's an unregistered vehicle.
I think it also said uninspected or somewhere it said. Registration or the inspection was out.
Unlicensed record disabled vehicle.
Yeah. Then the last line is, or a vehicle that does not have valid or current registration plate or that has a certificate of inspection that is more than sixty days beyond. So, you know, just thinking, I don't know, my elderly grandma doesn't always check her stickers very often. Being six, two months behind your inspection, I mean, you should be current, but if you're two months out of inspection, your property is considered a junkyard.
What about restoration of a vehicle?
It, it takes time.
If this is occurring outside of a building, which is what this is.
Like in your driveway?
I, I think it's already a
It would be a zoning violation.
You're already in violation.
You're already.
Without the, I mean, there's, yeah, there's that.
It wouldn't be classified as a junkyard. It would just, you'd just be violation.
Yeah.
Southeast corner of Good and Merrickstown. Okay, so yeah.
Property.
That has a fence around it now.
Yeah, the prior owners had a car in the back that was not licensed. It's parked outside and zoning where the township got after.
And that just.
They did win in my neighborhood.
And so, yeah, just.
You can't just buy a car and stick it in your backyard and.
You have to put it in a garage, basically, is what.
Seems absurd.
It's, there's somebody that lives near me has five, right now, five cars outside in their front yard, unlicensed, unregistered, and it looks like a mess.
When was the zoning officer advised about?
Tonight.
We don't go out unless.
You know, just, just this kind of stuff. It just seems a little crazy. Like why, why would the township have an ordinance that's so narrow?
It's to keep what he's experiencing.
And you know what? And even if they have and I I think, I think people need to pursue their own quality of life within their own souls. Rather than caring that much about.
You're looking out your window and seeing the yellow town.
Five cars.
That's, you can't have a quality of life.
I would get some shades.
Call the township.
Yeah.
You know, the average person would call the township.
Yeah.
Relief.
Three of the cars have trees growing up. I mean.
Maybe, maybe it might be appropriate. Maybe it might be appropriate to remove that from the zoning ordinance. So that way the township is no longer responsible for fielding these calls.
Then we get the call that says we pay taxes, those people are diminishing our property values.
This is a very common definition in just about every single ordinance.
I was surprised not to find it there.
The only, the only thing I might suggest is, is take out the one or more. Just have more, more than one. Cause a single car, I wouldn't consider that house that we were just talking about, corner of Good Drive and Marietta to be a junkyard just because they have one car out back. You're just in violation of the zone.
Yeah.
And then.
The other, I mean, it's, to me, one car is not, make it junk, two or more.
Yeah.
Thought is, do we need this section in here already? Because, because in existing definitions, we have things like solid waste, self-storage, recycling facility, motor vehicle storage.
You need a definition of junkyard because it's a use in the township.
And it's not there currently.
It's not currently there.
That's the intent is now you, now, now you have a way to classify. And I mean, yeah, you're, the extreme example is that there is a ranch home with an unlicensed car and it is a junkyard, but there's also a junkyard, like you, someone would come in and put it in a junkyard. So I mean, now you're at least defining it.
This is just defining what it is.
I think.
Currently not.
And I get that, but I think one uninspected vehicle is not an appropriate definition of junkyard.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense. Yeah.
They might get in lots of things.
Yeah, I'm sure it's, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, again, again, this, it's all, it's all, that's over here.
I hear what you're saying.
So yeah, it's not, I don't think anybody's trying to say it's wrong. I think, or it's just, uh, I think in a lot of the, the staff and the people that, that were involved, it was a surprise that this wasn't already.
Quite honestly, most people that have one car that's not inspected, nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna complain about that.
Well, regardless. But generally, no.
Right.
It's the one that has that plus three engines sitting next door that.
Regardless of what will generally happen, I would prefer not to have an ordinance, hoping that someone will generally not notice it. You know, and, you know, I don't know, people don't notice ordinances, but then if someone would complain, they've got a little more weight behind them.
Well, this actually, this definition too, though, if, if I wanted to put a junkyard in, I would use this definition.
Right.
Right now, we don't have a definition for junkyard. So if I wanted to put a junkyard in, how, how do you define that?
You define it yourself. Yeah, we, we need to define it.
We need to find it. That's why it's in here because we didn't. So you can put a junkyard in, I don't know what district you can put it in. Probably.
It's probably like a.
The quarry zone or something like that.
Or, yeah.
Yeah. So, but then, you know, as a residence, if I, I don't know, get busy, don't look at my sticker for a while. If my neighbor fusses enough, could I get?
Yeah, but I think there's also the ordinance under there that you can have a current registration as well.
They're not gonna qualify your house as a junkyard.
This is just defining.
And you would be given thirty days. I think the concern there would probably be more of a, it would be a police involvement than like if the car is operated on the road, but I think if, if you got a letter in the mail, hey, you're in violation of this, it wouldn't be like day one, you're getting a fine. You would probably be allotted some amount of time to correct that.
You'd be going before the district justice before you get any kind of fine.
Yeah. So I mean, it, it's not as if like the next day, twenty-four hours is up, you're occurring a fine every day that it's out of inspection. I think the intent here would be to prevent the accumulation of what it refers to as junk vehicles on a property.
And I, I, I guess, I guess I just don't.
Well, it still falls under because you don't even need the inspection. You, you can even have your registration current. So I mean, that you can do on.
Anything you can't legally drive on the road.
Right.
It, I think, again, it's trying, it's a, trying to prevent multiple issues as a catch-all, but it also is, is trying to define the literal junkyard as well as preventing issues on properties.
Maybe that's what we're kind of getting confused here. This is, this is not to define a, a violation of existing this is if somebody wants to come in and put a a junkyard in where they get cars and sell parks and stuff like that.
I get that that's the intent, but I could see it.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it requires some type of license then.
I just.
And a zoning ordinance that doesn't allow you to put your RV in the front yard. It must be in, I think, the side yard or backyard. Cause of aesthetics.
Right.
Which I.
And, and all these rules really ultimately get driven by complaints.
Yes.
And, and we do get complaints.
You know, and perhaps you should maybe be handling complaints differently. And that's a whole nother topic, but I don't, I don't think that township should be, I don't know, managing people's lives that much. I think fixing a car is generally, people have vehicles in their yard because they intend to fix them. You know, if they're junk vehicles, it might be a, a long shot, hopeful intent. Some sit there for a while, but a lot of people wanna fix up old cars rather than getting rid of them. And I think fixing cars is a good thing to do, rather than just, you know, disposable, get rid of it culture. I don't, I have no problem with junk cars clearly, but.
Yeah, so I would be on the other side. If they're gonna do that, I'd rather they do it inside.
All currently registered.
Which is a use in the township that's permitted.
And just with this too, that it had a similar type of thing over when you're talking about vehicle service facilities. Um, let me find it. Um, two seventy.
The page.
Uh, page eight. Well, I, my, mine's different because I had printed this out.
So.
Let me see if it's.
Section.
It was page.
Two seventy-five, two point.
Yeah, it's two seventy dash five point two dot oh, cause I had printed out and taken it through. Let me find it. I'll find it on yours.
Five point what?
Is it under a certain section?
In the beginning of eight.
Oh, yeah, it's your page seven, but mostly on page eight.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, so it says here, um, all vehicles that have been brought in for service, maintenance, or repairs. Or shall be in a state of active repair, and then this is the part, and shall not be permitted on the premises for a period of more than sixty days. Um, that sixty days, um, just, I don't know if you have consulted with any automotive type people. But right now, there's like a really big parts backlog, and sometimes you're literally waiting for parts for. Well over sixty days, cause with a lot of the supply chain stuff, you know, you used to get parts immediately, but now. You get a call from manufacturers, you say you get it when you get it, and some cars sit there for six months just waiting on parts. Um, so I don't. I think that sixty days is probably difficult.
I think probably the reality is we had to put something in there to prevent excessive accumulation of junk cars.
Well, and I think your, your typical vehicle sales leasing and service, they're in the business of utilizing their square footage as efficiently as possible. So they wanna turn their vehicles out, they don't want cars sitting there any longer than they have to.
And we don't track when the car gets there or when it leaves.
Yeah.
There's a complaint, again.
Yeah, so I, I just think that that's not a, that deadline should be. And I think, yeah, and just the, you know, thinking of specifically the villages, cause it talks about having vehicles no closer than. Twenty feet to a property line, and I don't know exactly, speaking of like Roarstown in particular, there's a couple, there's like a detail shop right on the corner. Of Roarstown Road and some other type, I don't really know what all they do there, but there's a lot of cars parked there, and those property lines are super tight. So I don't, and I know they have their cars parked right up to the edge, so I don't think that twenty feet. Would even be feasible for the amount of business that they do at those detail shops. I don't. You know, it works for like a dealership or something, but not for some other automotive type. Yeah, yeah, that. I knew there was another.
They're, they're existing under the current ordinance, so unless they stop doing that, or, or, or remove the use from the property, they would. What you referred to as being grandfathered in, where you're saying, cause they're already there, right, they're already doing that, so this stuff would be. Their argument is like, hey, I was here, but prior to the ordinance change, you're fine as long as you don't.
Yeah, well, I know, for example, like, what if when they move out, the new tenant then would be.
Have to comply.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, disagree with that one too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it's just things to think through.
Yeah, like you said, it's, it's gonna be hard to have everybody agree to something, I think, as it was mentioned earlier, the intent of a lot of this from. The direction that was, um, provided was to. Try to account for maybe some worst case things that have been observed, and then. Nature of zoning being what it is, the enforcement or record keeping of that is, is kind of how you. Either be really like hardcore into it, or you're not, so I mean, there, that's the, the area there where you're trying to prevent an issue. You need something that you can point to and say it's, it's illegal, it can't just be, I don't like it. So I think here, you're saying that, and a township. Being driven by complaints, I think, is what was described, this allows somebody to correct something that maybe the majority would say is a problem. And that, again, there would be ten people who would nod and, you know, twenty-five that would, so I think it's hard to.
And, and I certainly understand what you're saying, um, I sort, I think I just fall on.
Exactly.
Other side of that opinion, where I think that the township should be focused on safety, and I think the township should. Not really be as concerned of, you know, personal, like, individual lifestyle choices, how individual business owners wanna. Operate, you know, to an extent, to an extent, everything to an extent, but I think, you know, I think. A little flexibility in these guy, I think these guidelines are a little too rigid.
Cindy, I'm just wondering, is there a way to incorporate some of these thoughts in the past, especially with, I'll say, three that Julie's pointed out here? I mean, you're looking for a motion to. Recommend the board supervisors approve these.
Right.
Um, and I know it's been going on for a year, but I wonder if there's any opportunity to. Table it or to send it back for further discussion, or have, have somebody else look at it to see.
I'm fine with it, some of the way it is.
Well, I think it comes down to a, a point of view, and I, I totally get what you're saying. Uh, and if that's the point of view of the planning commission at this point in time, then, yeah, certainly.
I think.
Table it and, um.
I would want, if, if we do vote on it tonight, though, I would at least want, um. Julie, if, if you decide to vote nay, then I think we should make it part of the record as to why you voted nay. You could cite the.
I can see that.
Three paragraphs or whatever you wanna do, um, just so the supervisors know that it's not. I'll say cut and dried, unanimous, and best things since sliced bread, so.
And I think.
I think it's appropriate that, that they do get some feedback other than just a recommendation.
I, I, some of her statements I do kind of agree with, and some of the wording could be tweaked a little bit, that's my opinion.
I think we probably should have a, a joint meeting of the board and the planning commission, just so that everybody's on the same path. It's been a while, probably, at least over a year.
I, I've never met with them.
I think we skipped the last year for COVID.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that certainly would, would, uh, help promote the position that you, you have explained.
But, but this is something the board of supervisors wanna vote on soon, right? It's not something like.
To move it along, yes.
Okay. Okay. Is Mr. Caldwell's on Zoom?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
Um, you have any comments, Dan, one way or the other? Any, any paragraphs or?
No, I'm fine with the, uh, with the language as it, as it is presented.
Okay, I just saw your name up there with a Xbox symbol or something there, I don't know. Alright. Okay, um, any further discussion or is time for the? Okay. What, you wanna be here for another half? Your husband's not coming for another half hour to pick you up? Okay, so, um, I'm ready for a motion on the, um, zoning ordinance text amendments.
Chairman, I'll make the motion to recommend to the board of supervisors approval of the zoning ordinance tech, text amendment as presented.
Yes, it is. There, I have a motion by Mr. Datter, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend the board of supervisors approve the zoning ordinance text amendment as presented this evening. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so, five, two, zero, with the dissenters being Mr. Olby and Mrs. Will. Again, for the record, um, would either of you like to highlight specific portions that you take exception to?
The two portions she was talking about towards the end there, the junkyard, I think is a little too restrictive.
Okay.
I know we only need, but, you know, if you got a neighbor that, for instance, wants to get after his neighbor. He's gonna hunt him down and he's gonna take it to, to us and say, or to somebody and say, go get him. Uh, and then the other one, I can think of a few. Businesses right now that we would be negative, negatively impacting the value of their property.
Which, which section are you referring to now?
I'm referring to the proximity of parking to a property line, the sixty day window, there's a few properties, like she said, in Roarstown. Right now, if they tried to sell and the new person had to comply, their value would drastically.
Okay, that's two seventy.
It's a motor, motor vehicle leasing.
Five.
Service use only, that, that's, that's what you're referring to.
Yeah.
Motor vehicle leasing or service use, yes.
And that's what you're referring to, specifically is that twenty foot from the right of way.
That and the storage timeframe.
Okay.
I think it's in the same one, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yep, it's a five, two, oh, oh.
There's a sixty day storage timeframe, and I can think of a property right now in, in Roarstown that stuff's been sitting out back for a long time, and. Soon as this goes, somebody's gonna be calling, if he ever tries to sell that property, I know that, that intersection needs major right of way. Uh, taking to improve that intersection, he's already lost his value in that property. So this is only further impacting the value of that property.
Okay, Julie?
Yeah, my, I'll just kind of, the major sections I have, um, concerns with are the definition of junkyard. The burdens on vehicle, um, sales and leasing, um. The timeframe and also the, the parking, and then, um. The accessory, the, your requirement for only relatives to be in accessory dwelling units. Um, do you want the numbers?
Yeah.
It's a.
Two seventy dash five point two, A, ten and eleven, or eleven and twelve.
Well, accessories dwelling is in section one, under definition, and then is it?
Seventy-five, two, A, eleven.
Versus?
Oh, that's the actual ordinance number.
Which one? Okay, what is it?
Two seventy dash five point two A, um, eleven and twelve.
That's on page number seven.
Under accessory dwelling.
I wonder, page seven, it's not, page six, section sixteen, is that what? Section sixteen.
Section sixteen.
Just to be clear, the definition of that currently is restricted to family, so that, again, that's not changing.
Okay.
So.
So I think we have three of them, three areas. The junkyard.
Their definition.
The accessory dwelling.
Which is eleven and twelve. Because it's too restricted.
Wait, you said eleven and twelve.
And I think just the rationale being that I think township ordinances would, should be more concentrated on. Safety, protection of property rights, rather than lifestyle choices and per, individual business disciplines.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the motor vehicle one, which was. Five point two double oh.
Two seventy, five point two double oh, yeah. Um, just that sixty days is not a reasonable number.
Right now.
Um, yeah, and I kind of forgot it was in there, but there's stuff about outdoor dining too, but I guess we passed that.
Okay, thanks again for the discussion, and just points out that there's, uh, different viewpoints on every subject here. Um, okay, uh, moving to new plan submissions, what's coming?
So Shriver Pediatrics at, uh, six twenty Community Way is planning a building expansion and expanding their parking lot. They're going out towards the, uh, the angle, uh, Community Way. Nilt Road, they have actually submitted their final land development plan for that project, that's off of Nilt Road, that's the sixteen, I think it's sixteen units. Going in there. The zoning ordinance text amendment for signage, you'll be seeing, I don't know if you're a January meeting, but the meeting after that, maybe February. That's another, gonna be another discussion point. And then twenty-seven, twenty-seven Columbia Avenue, it's a small rezoning request, taking one point five acres from enterprise to community business.
It's out, um, by the bowling alley, out that area again?
It's the front half of the Hershey farm along Columbia. If that gives you some bearing, next to the, uh, yacht club.
The front half of it?
The front half on Columbia, they're just making the community business deeper.
Yeah, okay.
His farm is his own enterprise, and they're just making it deeper to community commercial.
Anything else under old business or project report?
You got my manager's report, I don't know if there's any questions about the beginning, uh, the planning report, uh, you reviewed the special exception. The sign ordinance is coming, Tequila Mexican Grill is, uh, doing a liquor transfer. The Nilt Road Cluster is coming in, Shriver's coming in, we took a look at Mavis Tire, uh, twenty-seven, twenty-seven. Wolf Furniture Building, I recently found out that they're on Bennett Avenue, that's turning into a amusement, indoor amusement park. Go-kart indoor, uh, should be interesting, yeah.
Same one on top of Shaw.
No, not same crew, no, it's a different company. Yes, yeah, yeah. Keaton Control is, it has entered their building, so they now have seventy employees that have relocated, that was an interesting manufacturer, and they actually manufacture. Food, uh, production pieces, and then.
Who, who is that?
Keaton Control, running pump.
Right at the roundabout there. Across, across, on the same side, but on the north side.
Okay.
And just kind of a rundown of the Stony Battery warehouses, six oh one is finished, and that's gonna house Shift Inc. Uh, seven oh one is under construction, uh, by the owner, and seven ninety one has just been purchased by six oh one. That's gonna be a future lease space, and of course, KRM has been functioning with Baron Industries. It's a busy, busy road right now. That's all I got, unless you have questions.
You would expect we'd have a meeting in January, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, just a sort of a question on housekeeping, are there any members coming up for?
Oh, yeah.
Reap, reapportment?
Yes, one of you got a email, I don't know which one it was. Was it Ann? Okay, yeah. I don't know if you got back to Betsy yet or not, but I don't know if you got back to Betsy yet or not. Okay, okay, positively, I hope.
She's not, she's not saying.
No, she isn't, it's like pulling teeth.
Okay, well, if there's no further business, I will wish everybody a happy holiday season.
So, what's the process, uh, for sight distance at intersections, who, who, somebody like me? There was an accident in front of my house, and there are some trees, a line of trees way up against where it's a bad intersection to see out of. It was two young girls, one broadsides another, and the first thing out of their mouth is, I had to pull halfway out into the intersection. To even see her coming. So, I, I think it's a bad sight distance because of trees, and I don't.
Suggest the homeowner nicely?
He's, I, that homeowner, I, I'm sure that homeowner's gonna say, they're in the right of way, they've been there before I built my home. So, that's probably what's gonna happen.
What, your question is, what do you do about it?
Yeah, my question is, I mean, I could take, I could take a wheel out there and measure it, and it's probably not gonna be.
It's not for you to do it.
Yeah, I know, it's, I'm just like.
Where was the accident?
I, I'm on Running Pumper, I guess it'd be Helena, I think, is the name of the road, so when you pull out of Helena, and you look.
That's cause they're going more than twenty-five miles an hour down that street too, probably.
Yeah, I'm sure this was going a little faster than twenty-five mile an hour too, but, but. There was a baby in the car on the side that got broadside, you know what I mean, and.
Yeah, that's, that's bad, I used.
It's not a good intersection to pull out, you can't really see.
Yeah, cause the curve's going the wrong way.
And it's a line of old trees right up against the edge of pavement that make it difficult to.
Yeah.
That was, that's like the one curve on Abbeyville, that it used to be.
Yeah, right. Okay, once again, have a nice holiday, we'll see you in January, meetings at times.
Happy New Year.
Happy holidays and happy new year, everybody.
Thank you, Dan.
Bye.
Somebody spying you?
He's the only one there. Wonder. Thanks, Nick.
Middle of fifty's all, middle of fifty's all next week.
Middle of fifties all, middle of fifties all next week. Yeah, mid, mid fifties all next week.
I'm not complaining.
They're probably making snow, are they?
We did adopt the sidewalk agreement.
They were targeting the fifteenth.
Pretty much did it, other than. Other than actually constructing for. Yeah. Wait and see, yeah.
Guess nobody really answered what, what I should do.
I wrote down the name, the intersection. Sorry, I should have actually told you that. Um, I'll present this to Perry Madonna. He'll take a look out and see. But then you have to kind of weigh, if it was one accident in, like, forever. If there's speed involved, do we really want them to cut down those trees? If it's twenty-five miles per hour in both roads?
Well, I also, I also.
Well, then it may not be any big loss either.
One of the trees fell. Say they, um, obviously.
Still the property owners.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I don't wanna be the neighbor that goes.
No. It can be, it can be the main township. Hey, there was an accident here. Yeah, now we'll take a look at it. Sure.